Yes.
This is Susan. Do you want our cameras on? Or with the number of people, would you prefer them off so there's not a video problem?
I guess that's more of an IT question. Laura, do you have any suggestion?
I do not. Right now, it doesn't look like a lot of people have their cameras on.
I don't think it's important to have it on, Commissioner Lammers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will call to order our Plan Zone Commission meeting, our public hearing today, Tuesday, January 19th. We'll start with our public hearing. Commissioner Tomlin, roll call please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Present.
Lammers?
Present.
Med? Med?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Tomlin, President Ingram?
Present.
Hepner?
Here.
Bransgard?
Present.
Reinartz?
Present.
Manus?
Here.
And Garrington. Garrington?
He's showing up as there.
Here.
There we go.
Thank you. We have a court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Before we get started with our public hearing tonight, I have a couple announcements that I hope everybody in the audience and those on virtual can cooperate with me. This is, we've got the potential for a lot of people that may want to talk tonight, be it here or over the air. I need a lot of patience and cooperation. This is the biggest group that we've had to deal with on a couple petitions that could or may not have multiple comments to be made. I want everybody to please cooperate and limit your conversation to five minutes or less. And I would appreciate that we not have a lot of duplication, that new points are all good points. And all your statements need to be directed at the commission, not at staff, not at anybody in the audience. I also need to ask you all to turn your cellphones off as they could interfere with our recording. With that being said, we'll start our public hearing with first item on the agenda, which is ORD 20-02, the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to amend a section of the campus master plan bounded by East 11th Street and East 10th Street between Pershing Avenue and Perry Street from an athletic field to student housing. Staff, would you like to comment first?
Yep. Okay, pulling up the presentation for you.
Laura?
Yep. It's pulling up. All right. So this is a major amendment to the land use plan for Palmer, which is an institutional campus in our current code. This map shows the notice area for changes to plans in SIC. It's a 500-foot notice area, which is depicted as a yellow circle around the property. The area is bounded by 10th, East 10th Street and East 11th Street between Pershing and Perry. This is just a general vicinity map with the zoning. The blue is SIC and is surrounded by a variety of land uses, primarily residential multifamily and single-family, two-family residential. So the purpose of this request is to allow for a 115-unit, 139-bed student housing building in an area that was previously planned for an athletic field. Section 17.07.030F of the zoning code creates the thresholds for what's considered a major amendment. Major amendments require Plan Zone Commission review and City Council approval. This property was zoned PID planned institutional district in 2018. And as I mentioned before, our new code refers to them as institutional campus districts. The current campus master plan is shown in this map here. It was originally planned for an athletic or sports field. The proposed amendment would be for a student housing building is depicted in the dark orange or red, as well as some additional parking and then an enhanced corridor along East 11th Street. This is the overall campus master plan, showing the revisions in it. As you can see, the building F here would be the student housing. And it is replacing where in the existing plan, there was housing along Main Street between 7th and 8th Streets. This is simply moving where they were planning on doing student housing to this new area. For public input, notices were sent to property owners within 500 feet of the request notifying them of the neighborhood meeting and public hearing. The neighborhood meeting was held on January 11th and over 20 people were in attendance. And a public hearing notice was published in the Quad City Times. And then recommendations will come at the February 2nd Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. That's all I have for, these are two separate action items, just so you're aware. There is a, we'll have a separate discussion on the right-of-way after this discussion about the major amendment.
Thank you, Laura. Would the petitioner care to step forward and explain their petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. I'm Jason Holdorf from IMEG, and I'll be doing the presentation. But at this time, first, I would like to turn it over to Denny Markiplier with Palmer to first speak on kind of reasoning behind the move of the student housing over to the Perry-Pershing area first. Denny?
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the commission for this forum to discuss this topic. Most of you in the community are familiar with Palmer's story. We're the first chiropractic training institution. We were chartered in 1897. We were the only chiropractic college at that time. Since that time, over the last 124 years, there were actually 40 training programs for chiropractic, half in the U.S., half outside of the U.S. Palmer continues to be committed to be the trusted leader in chiropractic education. With the support of our community, our on-campus community, the Quad City community, the city of Davenport and others, we have a goal to continue that trusted leadership through continued experience development for our students and curriculum development. Part of that, of course, is the buildings that we have for our students. We've done a lot of surveys over the last few years, finding out what our stakeholders would like to see on campus, and we've rolled that into a strategic plan. We were with you three years ago for a PID plan approval, and that PID plan approval really initiated much of the facilities improvements that we had externally from our building space internally. Over the time of that, since that approval, over the last three years, we've continued to have some stakeholder comments and edit that plan. And Laura, if you could go to the next slide. That really summarizes some of the edits that we have as we continue to advance our students' experience and learning. And Laura, one more slide? It's led us to, it's led us to just a couple of-
And the people that are participating virtually, please mute their phones.
It's led us to a couple of edits. First is to the student housing. The location in the PID, now the SIC, plan had it on Main Street. As we continued to talk with our students and stakeholders, they suggested that we locate the housing more closely aligned to our existing assets, such as our library space, our clinic space, our student union, and our facility for working out, our Bitner Center. By doing, by moving it from Main Street to Perry Street, it accomplishes that for the stakeholders in their comments. Once we moved it from planning from Main Street to Perry, we then had to next tackle the idea of the athletic field and how it might be resized to accomplish student housing and an athletic field in that same space. That necessitated a couple of changes to 11th Street and some of the other properties in that area. So Jason Holdorf, as well as Greg Gao, you're here to talk about the specifics of those plans. But that's generally what generated the edits to the plan that brought us here tonight.
Thank you.
So what I'm going to try to make my way through here fairly quickly in the interest of time for the commission and the attendees. We're going to just speak briefly on the area affected by the major amendment, some of the different proposed alleyways and street vacations, as such that were already brought up during the PID process three years ago, and now we're moving it forward as part of the SIC process. We'll show kind of some revised access to those alleyways to address the adjacent neighbors. We'll show the original SIC layout. We'll show the updated one and why the major amendment. We'll show you a detailed site plan of both the student housing and the athletic field area. We will address the 11th Street corridor with some details and kind of show you some examples of the campus edge treatment around the outside. And finally, the building rendering of the student housing facility. So what you see in the red box there is the major changes boundary to the SIC plan, which triggered the major amendment. It's between, like Laura had mentioned, between East 10th Street and 11th Street and from Perry to Pershing. Thing up here now in red would be your, would be the proposed vacation of the alleyways. They're just south of 12th Street and north of 11th, kind of working from north to south. And then the second proposed vacation is 11th Street, which is, you can kind of see in the brick there. And then the last piece that we're requesting a vacation of is the L-shaped portion of the alley down to the south, which would be Pershing, off of Pershing, and then continuing south. This is an exhibit kind of showing how we are proposing to revise access to those alleyways in blue. So the red would be what is being vacated and which will be, is requested to be vacated. And then blue is what would then still remain for access for the adjacent neighbors and such being ingress, egress easements. So we would occupy, or so we would show that up on the north, the L-shaped piece coming from Perry Street back to where the original alley was, and then up north to 12th Street. And then the second piece down in the southeast corner in blue would be showing access to Pershing through an existing parking lot that then we would reconstruct and bring, and get back access to the alleys. Therefore, allowing a full through for garbage or refuse pickup and such so that there's backing up is not necessary. This is just kind of a quick snapshot between 10th and 11th and Pershing and Perry of what the original PID back in 2018 had shown. This is an athletic field, both to the north and south of 11th Street. Now with the revision for the major amendment of the SIC, we're now showing in red, like Laura had mentioned, the 115-unit, I believe, 139-bed student housing facility. And just to the east of that area would be a new parking lot. What we're showing in orange there is the proposed enhanced campus corridor, which would act as a pedestrian corridor as well as fire truck access to the student housing facility. Making sure that we're maintaining the proper, and we have initial conversations with the fire department on that as well. And the next slide kind of gives you a little bit more of the detail. So this is oriented north, is to your left. Now on the sheet, 12th Street would be on your left. So what we're showing there in the far northeast corner is the synthetic turf recreational athletic field. This would also act as a stormwater management below the field for that area. We're showing also in the northwest corner there, or to your bottom left, would be a small new parking lot there, as well as the modified access for the alley, kind of the L-shaped coming off of Perry Street, coming to the east and the north to 12th Street. We're showing the orientation of the student housing, kind of facing towards the west, towards campus, kind of opening up towards some of the different amenities that Denny had mentioned. We're showing some of the detail on 11th Street, showing that it is going to be reconstructed. We are going to utilize some of the existing brick to create kind of the historic corridor, as well as adding in some additional concrete. It could be colored concrete or pavers of such. And then whatever brick is not utilized, we've had conversations with the city that we would turn back over to the city for other projects. Also shown on that is the courtyard area, kind of enhanced out to the west side and kind of in the pocket there of the student housing and looking back out again towards campus, towards some of those amenities. If you go to the next slide, Laura, this gives you kind of a little bit of a blow-up of what that 11th Street corridor is. We have some decorative concrete patterning vans coming across. We will, like I said, we will utilize some of that historic brick in some fashion. There'll be a monument sign, kind of talking about the historic 11th Street brick, street and such. Like I said, just kind of doing a little bit of a blow-up area and then also adding some of the softening with landscaping with the trees and such in the area. This is a slide kind of showing some of the edge and boundary treatments that we're looking at. This would be along up at the athletic field, which would be up more towards 12th Street, 12th and Pershing. So kind of showing what the edge treatment would be. We're looking at some brick, brick posts and such with a decorative fencing on across there along Pershing and 12th Street. Then as your grade kind of transitions from north to south, eventually the field will be sitting kind of below the street and such. So that just kind of shows you, the one on the right shows a different view of what that would look like there as you come down Pershing. If you go one more slide, Laura, and then I'll have you come backwards. I apologize somehow. These got just a little bit out of order. There you go. So then this is showing both on the left, another sample of the edge treatment. And then on the right there, that's going to be more down Pershing Street next to the student housing, along the parking lot. The parking lot will be up above, and then you'll have a little four-to-one or five-to-one slope down to Pershing Street right-of-way, of which we will be placing that campus boundary or edge, edge along that edge. And you can kind of see it highlighted there along the, along the right-of-way and sidewalk. Now, if you wouldn't mind going back one, I apologize. So this would be one of the, so this is your student housing proposed rendering. This would be looking from Perry Street, looking back into that, into that, kind of the courtyard area and such for the students, having some of the different features and amenities. Just kind of giving you a little bit of an idea of what we're looking at for that student housing building. Again, this would be viewing it from Perry Street from the west, looking back into that courtyard. With that, I'd be, I guess the only thing I would mention is I did say that we would have stormwater management up on the athletic field with it being synthetic turf. We'll be storing the water below grade in the rock. We will also have a stormwater detention pond and stormwater management there on the south end or on the right side of the student housing building as well. So with that, I believe I've tried to touch on everything in a timely manner. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Commissioners, at this time, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Jane Schneider. Sorry.
I was wondering how many parking spaces will be available?
Could you go ahead and just stay at the podium, please?
You bet. Absolutely. Yeah, so we did do, as part of the SIC major amendment, we have kind of addressed the overall, we're taking a look holistically as parking as a whole for the campus on that. So there is some parking lot here that will be modified, but we are adding some parking. And then there was also some parking that is not being utilized on campus. We definitely don't want to be adding parking lots to over, overpark the campus and such. So we kind of addressed that as part of that SIC and the narrative portion. We kind of talked through, Palmer did go through and do a study in February of 2020, as well as September of 2020, and kind of did an inventory of parking spaces during a normal peak hour and such. So we do have good counts on what, what some of those parking demands were at that time. And then that did help us to form kind of our, the modification as part of the SIC process. So I don't know if that, does that answer your question or?
I was just wondering how many in the new-
On the new? Okay. Yeah. Well, I went way above and beyond your question. I apologize. I believe there are approximately 50 to 60 stalls in that parking lot, I believe. Somewhere around 50, I believe.
And that will be adequate for the 139 beds available?
Yeah, so some of the, a lot of the students already are on campus. And, and then, yes, we're looking at kind of revamping some of the parking, the permitting of some of those lots. I know definitely the one down along Harrison is not utilized that often and such. So overall, campus as a whole, we have plenty of parking. It's just a matter of reallocating the permitting of such on that. As part of the SIC, or as part of the PID back in 2018, there are some other future parking lot opportunities just to the north and west of this facility, just north and west of Perry Street, that we are showing as future parking lots as well. So if the demand is as such, then they do have those in the original PID as well that they can exercise.
You done, Jane? Thank you. Commissioner Manus?
Thank you. Maybe I missed this, but what is happening on the Main Street area that was formerly planned for student housing?
Sure. So in that, now that will be green space for now. We did not modify that area as part of the major amendment, if I'm correct, Laura. So that will remain as is, but there are no intentions to anything at this time. We didn't modify it, so it may become student housing in the future. But at this time, there are no plans for that location.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Any additional questions, either virtually or present?
Commissioner Reinartz?
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Reinartz.
Yeah, the one question I have is, is there a net gain or a net loss in terms of housing units when you take a look at the existing area, your proposed area, and the new modified area?
I believe the answer would be there would be a net gain of, of student housing with the, with the student housing facility. I think that answers the question.
It does. Are you looking for a number, Commissioner Reinartz, or just the answer?
That was just the answer that I was looking for, whether it was a net gain or a net loss when you take a look at the whole geographical area.
Yeah, there would be a net gain. And I think Denny kind of alluded to, from some of the different studies and such, the students are really looking to try to live on campus, and this is kind of providing that opportunity for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now I will seek anybody in favor or in opposition. If you'd like to step forward, identify yourself and make your statement known. Seeing none in the audience, are there any virtually that want to participate? Seeing none. Final call for comments? Final call for questions. Commissioners, anything? Seeing none, we will close ORD 20-02 at this time, and it will come back to us at our February 2nd meeting with recommendations from city staff. We will now move on to R O W 20-02, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to vacate East 11th Street between Perry Street and Pershing Avenue and portions of an alley in blocks 89 and 96 of Leclerc's Sixth Edition. Laura?
Should be Eighth Edition.
Oh. What? Eighth Edition. Correct. My mistake.
No problem.
Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, so we use the same notice area for these right-of-way vacation requests, which are in concert with the major amendment that was discussed prior. There are, as Jason covered, there are three right-of-way requests as part of this case. There is East 11th from Pershing to Perry, which is approximately 20,000 square feet. The alley in block 89, which is this southern one, is approximately 5,600 square feet. And then the alley in block 96, which is approximately 4,100 square feet. So the purpose of the request is part of Palmer's master plan. East 11th Street between Perry and Pershing and the alleys on blocks 89 and 96 were planned for future right-of-way vacation. So Palmer is formally requesting to vacate these to move forward with their future development. East 11th Street is designated as a historic brick street. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended a conditional approval of removing that street from the historic brick list, street, list on August 8th of 2018, and those were incorporated. The conditions were incorporated into the rezoning in ordinance 2018-107. The conditions read that Palmer formally requests the vacation slash abandonment of public streets and alleys depicted in the land use plan, which is what they are requesting to do. And condition four is, in the event that East 11th Street between Perry and Pershing is vacated and conveyed to Palmer, that a pedestrian walkway be constructed from Perry to Pershing in the general location of East 11th Street utilizing existing bricks from the roadway surface and that historical markers to be located at its intersections with Perry Street and Pershing Avenue. Notices were sent to property owners within 500 feet to mirror the request for the major amendment. This more than exceeds the 200-foot notice area we normally do for right-of-way vacations. It was incorporated into the neighborhood meeting on January 11th as part of the major amendment and incorporated into the public hearing notice published in the Quad City Times. As previously covered, the proposed major amendment would create an enhanced corridor on East 11th Street and function as both pedestrian walkway as well as the fire access for serving the student housing. Also previously mentioned is proposed ingress and egress easements. Should this vacation be approved, this would be reflected in a future subdivision. And just to kind of reiterate the overall campus master plan, the vacation would be across where their athletic field is for the block 96. And then the block 89 would be part of their parking lot. And then East 11th Street would be vacated to allow for pedestrian corridor. Formal staff recommendation will be provided February 2nd, 2021, Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Laura. Would the petitioner care to step forward again?
I don't really have anything to add, other than I will be here for questions. And if there's anything, we did have a neighborhood meeting that kind of covered that. We did have one neighbor that had some questions with regards to access. We reached out to them, and we're kind of working through some of those things along Perry Street. So that's all I would have to add. I will stay here if there's questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Manus? Just a second. Commissioner Manus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I assume Palmer already owns all of this property. Is that accurate?
Yes, they own pretty much everything that we are looking to vacate. They have, they own properties on both sides of the north portion that we're looking to vacate. They do own everything south of 11th Street, as well as northeast of 11th Street. They do not own the northeast corner of 11th and Perry Street. They do not own that one parcel there. And then to the south, they do own everything that's the east leg of the- east leg of the green. They own both the north and the south sides of that, and they do own everything up to where we're ending the vacation. We are not going any further into anybody else's, adjacent to anybody else's property. And then that's where we're providing that access ingress easement as well off that property.
And something that the staff said made me realize I should have asked this in our earlier discussion, so I hope that it's okay if I go ahead and ask now. I believe there's only one building that's still located in the, between Tenth and Eleventh, Pershing to Perry, the brick apartment building. Uh, is that owned by Palmer also?
I do not believe that one is owned by Palmer. Is that correct, Denny? There are, there are three properties that would be immediately west of the athletic field that's planned. Palmer owns one of those apartment buildings, and an outside agent owns two of them. And that is...
What about south of the student housing also, between Tenth and Eleventh?
That's right. So the housing, the south border of the housing, uh, is, is not owned by Palmer. But there's a, um, there's a parking lot between that owned property by the outside agent and Palmer's housing. And, uh, that gentleman was part of the public hearing and one of the individuals that we spoke with. He was comfortable with the change.
Okay. The brick apartment building that is in use right now, that is on the east side of Perry, is, does that have any historical value?
I'm not sure. I think, however, the, of the three brick apartments on the north side, uh, also on Perry, I, I believe at least one, if not all of them are on. But none of them are planned to be raised or otherwise altered with this plan.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing else.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Anybody else at this time? Virtually?
Mrs. Chair, Susan?
Go ahead. Commissioner Lambers?
I just wanted to clarify something I, I just heard, and, um, if the Eleventh Street thing gets approved, the blue lines and the green line, does that happen simultaneously or with future development?
That would...
That would, that would happen simultaneously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambers. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I apologize if, um, I, I, this may, I should have probably asked this question in the previous discussion, but it's also sort of a request, um, uh, from the, from the petitioner to also kind of, I'm just thinking about foot traffic and the pedestrian walkways and what they're expecting. It seems as though, um, you know, the, the property on Main Street was in, more centrally located to, um, you know, the, the buildings and whatnot, and curious about the additional foot traffic they expect across Brady Street, um, and any, you know, intentions with that in the future.
So this isn't necessarily part of the major amendment itself, but, um, Palmer does have, um, access across Brady Street via Skywalk and some enhanced crosswalks as well where there are time for a light.
Yep. That's what I was going to add.
Right, and I'm, I am aware of that. I'm just, um, you know, noting the location, um, it seems to be quite a bit north of, you know, um, that. So I'm, I'm just, you know, people's habits, and that's a hundred and fifteen, um, you know, residents, you know, more people that we would expect them to be crossing the street on a regular basis. So I'm just, um, curious, you know, if there's any, um, you know, additional, I guess it would be something to evaluate in the future, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garrington was at what?
Go ahead, Commissioner Garrington.
Um, as I look at the plan, you have the parking area emptying out onto the brick walkway.
Yes, that's correct. So what we're looking at is it, um, yes, then that will be raided and that will be reconstructed as such. Part of that area will be brick, but not the entire street or fire lane will be brick, kind of for some of those reasons. Um, there'll be a combination of concrete, concrete pavers, as well as utilizing some of the brick in, in some form of a historical strip or fashion of such. Um, but yes, we do realize that, yes, the parking lot is emptying out into a certain portion of that corridor. Uh, so aesthetically and architecturally, that, that will change after that parking lot entrance, such that it would prevent vehicles from continuing on through. Uh, that area will have kind of a rolled curb area, as well as changing some of the different pavement colors or different pavement materials to kind of address that, to direct all of the traffic to the parking lot area.
And, and you really think that a hundred and thirty-some students are only going to have fifty cars?
No, there is other parking throughout campus and through the permitting process... Yeah, could you please repeat that? Commissioner Garrington?
Yeah, yeah. If I remember my campus days, everybody wants the closest spot.
Sure. Uh, yeah, so again, like I had mentioned, uh, previously, there is another opportunity in the PID approved plan that there is another parking lot just to the northwest of Eleventh and Perry Street as well that could be enhanced as such. It's not on the, you know, it is part of the approved PID plan back in 2018. So if, if demand drives as such, uh, then that can definitely be exercised. At the same time, the, you know, Palmer doesn't want to overpark and have a lot of parking lots kind of throughout the entire campus. I know, and that means more hard surface and such. So we're trying to find the delicate balance between, um, respecting, I guess, both sides of that as well. And that's why we did, that's why Palmer went through some of those two different demand studies, both in February of 2020, around the COVID times. So obviously, that one was a little bit slated, so that's why they did it again in September. And then we're, and then my, Palmer will continue to closely monitor those, um, those traffic patterns and such.
Commissioner, can I?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to add that part of the reason they're vacating the alley, uh, uh, to the south is to the development of one of their planned parking lots as well.
Yes. Yep.
Commissioner Garrington, did you have another question?
I did. Um, students moving in and out, uh, what's, what's the plan for an area where they will be able to move in and out, uh, bring in trucks, uh, vehicles for moving items in and out of there?
Yep. So we did keep an area up front that's kind of hashed out in, in the parking lot area, and we made some wider sidewalks, and the elevator is right off of that location. So they'll be able to come in there off of, uh, Pershing and Eleventh Street and then into that parking lot. And then there's an area right in front there for that, for that exact reason that you mentioned. Yep, good question.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you indicated that you would be adding, if this vacation would go through, adding some emergency or fire protection access, I believe on the north block around Twelfth Street and then down to the south?
Uh, it's actually, actually, there will be maintaining a twenty-foot strip through Eleventh Street, actually, as part of that pedestrian corridor. There will be...
Oh, so there wouldn't be, there's nothing, you're not adding anything to the, to the north block? I thought I saw in your presentation that there was a...
There's another access ingress easement that does go to the north, uh, along the west side of the athletic field.
And what, what form would those be? Are they, is it a private sidewalk, or is it a, is it a right, another, would we be, I, this might go to staff, and does that trigger anything we have to do for a subdivision replat or anything?
If, if approved, we would be doing a subdivision plat.
Yep, and we plan to, we have that prepared preliminarily at this stage, to continue that. Yep.
Thank you.
Good question, Commissioner Tomlin. I appreciate it. Any additional questions virtually or in person? Hearing none. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Would anybody in the audience care to step forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this vacation request? Seeing none. Anybody virtually that has any opinions? Hearing none. Final re, final request for questions, commissioners? Seeing none. We will close case ROW twenty dash zero two. It too will return to us on February second. We appreciate your attendance tonight. Look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. Move on to REZ twenty dash zero nine, the request of S.J. Russell, L.C. on behalf of Sophie Foster Revocable Trust to rezone the property located at forty-six oh seven East Fifty-third Street to C two, uh, corridor commercial district and R dash MF multifamily residential district. The purpose of this rezoning is to lift the existing land use and development restrictions on the property and adjust the commercial zoning boundary and allow for a townhouse and multifamily development.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining from these discussions.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. If you would please exit the dais. Matt, would you care to start things off?
Okay, thank you. Um, so before you, on the screen is a zoning map of the area with the subject property outlined in black. Um, as you can see, the northern portion of the lot is zone C two, which is a commercial corridor district, with the southern portion being zoned R four, which is a single-family and two-family residential district. Uh, just to the east of this property is the city of Bettendorf. Um, as you can see, the surrounding, uh, zoning to the southwest and east is predominantly single-family residential, with, um, office park just to the north of the subject property, and then more commercial along Fifty-third Street and Utica Ridge. This map is the land use map for the area, uh, again, with that northern portion of the property being regional commercial, and then the southern portion being residential general. And you can see the surrounding land uses along Fifty-third are predominantly this commercial land use with more residential to the south. Uh, this is a vicinity map, just to give you a, a general sense of what's in the area. So the subject property is highlighted in yellow. So you can see, uh, predominantly single-family residential neighborhoods to the south, east, and west of the property. Uh, that red dashed line is the boundary between the city of Davenport and the city of Bettendorf. Um, along Fifty-third Street, you have, uh, a couple of different business and office parks. Uh, there's medical office in Bettendorf, and then, uh, just east, there's, uh, some minor retail as well. So the purpose of the C two corridor commercial district, this is really intended to address the commercial corridors that are predominantly oriented towards a mix of retail, personal service, and office uses. Um, the C two district really serves more auto-oriented development, both on individual parcels as well as in retail centers. It also can accommodate a mixed-use development type of proposal. So currently, the southern portion of this lot is zoned R four. So this is a single-family and two-family residential district. And then the applicant is proposing to rezone that southern portion to RMF, which is multifamily residential district, which really allows for a higher density of housing types. So the purpose of this request is to lift the existing land use and development restrictions on the property, to adjust the commercial zoning boundary, and to allow for townhouse and multifamily development on that southern portion. So the lot is currently undeveloped. It's being used for agriculture. It's, uh, just under thirty-eight acres of land. So the last time this came before the commission was in two thousand and eleven. Uh, the property was rezoned as part of a planned development district. Uh, the commission placed land use restrictions on the site, uh, meant to mitigate potential impacts to the surrounding residential neighborhoods. This development never occurred, however, these conditions remained on the property. Uh, this is a concept plan presented by the applicant. The northern portion of the site, you could see a variety of commercial users. Uh, the C two district would allow for uses such as retail, restaurant, office type of uses. The lower half is the residential component. This middle row would be largely geared towards, uh, apartment buildings and rental units, with the southern portion being more of a duplex or semi-detached townhome style. Uh, townhouse style. Uh, city staff sent out public notices to all the abutting property owners within two hundred feet, as well as to the city of Bettendorf, uh, notifying them of the neighborhood meeting that was held on January seventh, as well as tonight's public hearing date. At, uh, the January seventh public, uh, neighborhood meeting, uh, we had roughly forty people that attended the meeting to express concern over the proposal. Uh, comments generally were opposed to the rezoning. And then a public hearing notice was also published in the Quad Cities Times. Uh, the city has received, uh, several protest petitions from abutting property owners uh, since that neighborhood meeting on the seventh. Uh, these comments will be considered by city staff during the technical review process. Uh, the protest petition rate will be, um, held by the city council as part of their review process. So if, if over twenty percent of abutting property owners within two hundred feet file in a protest petition, the city council has to approve the rezoning by a three-fourth vote versus their typical majority vote. Uh, following the neighborhood meeting, Dan Dolan Homes, um, has responded to city staff regarding some of the neighborhood concerns. They've agreed to incorporating a fifty-foot buffer along the east, west, and south property lines where it butts their single-family residential neighbors. And they also have agreed to a height restriction of thirty-five feet for the residential buildings. So this is the same maximum height that would be allowed in the Davenport single-family, uh, neighborhood. So staff will be providing a formal recommendation at next, uh, planned zone commission meeting on the second. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions from staff at this time? Seeing none. Go ahead, Commissioner Reinhardt.
I just have one question for the, um, the townhouses in the back. Are there to be, um, zero property lines, Tom?
So the townhouses will have to be, um, each building will need to be its own lot or part of a HOA. Um, but from wall to wall, those would be, um, the plan is to owner-occupied.
Can we, can we go ahead? Commissioner Reinhardt, can we go ahead and listen to the developers first and then ask those questions? I was looking more for staff questions. No problem. It's all good. Would, uh, the petitioner like to step forward either for, on behalf of Russell or on behalf of Dolan?
They finally got to it. Yeah. What I'm doing right now.
Can you please mute your line? I didn't get a PowerPoint. If you give me some, we can put it on the computer. Just give us a second. Kevin, do you want to talk about your, about your company or?
Yeah, I can get started. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Kevin Dolan, uh, co-developing, uh, in conjunction with Russell. Dan Dolan Homes is a local, family-owned home building and development company. My father started about thirty years ago, and we've been building homes all over eastern Iowa ever since. We specialize in single-family and low-density multifamily housing, such as duplexes and townhomes. We live and work in this community. I drive by the development site every day. And our business model has always been to deliver high-quality homes that are not only a great place to live, but also enhance the surrounding community, both in terms of appearance and also property value. Our average sale price over the last year was a little over $400,000. Our average townhome rent is about $1,700 per month. And while I know there have been a number of developers that have come forward looking at this site, you know, as recently as 2018, there was a proposal by a company, a national firm from out of state. Dan Dolan Homes and Russell are members of this community, and we have every incentive to be a good neighbor.
All right, and I'm Aaron Bandmore. I'm from Russell. I'm joined here by Senior Vice President Caitlin Russell. A little bit about Russell, so like Kevin said, we were started right here in the Quad Cities, first started by Jim Russell in 1983, and we've been operating ever since. Done work in 31 different states, and that number continues to grow year after year. Some of the projects we've done around town that you may recognize would be the Essential Building, that's downtown Bettendorf, Overlook Village, senior living, which is in Moline, as well as the entire Birchwood Fields Office Park, which is right on the north side of 53rd, just north of the subject property tonight. I told you a little bit about myself, but here's some of those stats once again. So here on the screen, you see the preliminary site concept for the development so far. Again, this is conceptual, but Russell's focus will be the northern half of the property, which is about 18 acres. It'll be a mix of commercial uses from, you know, all kinds of retails essentially, but everything we are proposing and plan to develop will be within the C2 zoning guidelines.
I think the biggest takeaway from our perspective on this slide is the, kind of the natural transition from commercial along 53rd to multifamily rental housing, single-family semi-detached and semi-attached, and then the existing housing. So you see a natural flow from existing housing, increasing in density up to commercial.
So this was already up on the screen, but this is how the property is currently zoned. So C2 is on the northern half of the site, and it's Zoned R4 on the southern half. The changes we're proposing, there you go. So you can see the current zoning with our proposed site plan overlaid. And it was mentioned earlier, kind of what C2 zoning is, so it's a mix of retail, personal service, and office uses. And there is also an emphasis on the ability to make this area walkable. That's something we think, you know, will benefit everybody having the walkability of this area, so people can use the various amenities.
One thing I'd like to point out on this slide, you know, I think it's important to start the conversation from the perspective of what is currently allowed. The existing R4, there's about 20 acres, already allows for semi-detached, you know, duplex-style housing, much like what we're proposing. At five units per acre, someone could come in, a developer, and put in roughly 100 units without the need for this rezoning. I just think it's important to remember, kind of where we are currently. One of the ordinances currently in place actually requires that a developer putting in residential housing connect all three of the streets to the east, west, and south that stub out into the field. So, you know, we believe that tying into all those streets would cause a substantial amount of traffic, and that's one of the things that we're trying to have changed.
This next slide shows the zoning that we're proposing. So the, I guess, boundary of the commercial zone would be in a similar place to where it's at now, it'd actually be a little further south, but it won't have the wings on the sides. You know, this is also something where the commercial zoning we're proposing will approximately be the same size that it currently is. It's just we're proposing to modify the shape slightly and also lift some of the ordinances that were put in place back in 2011 on this property. So here's a look at a zoomed-in aerial of the conceptual commercial plan. And again, these are various uses that fall into the C2 zoning requirements. One thing I want to point out here is we do have two areas planned for detention on the southern corners of the commercial site. And what I really want to point out is this provides a nice buffer between the, what we're proposing be the commercial and the nearby adjacent neighborhoods. Just creates some space there so there wouldn't be commercial immediately in someone's backyard. So from the commercial standpoint, these are some of the concepts we've drawn up with our partner, Shy Pattery. Again, we want to emphasize that these aren't your standard, kind of lower-end commercial buildings. These are all really high-end quality buildings that is something that Russell really wants to take pride in. You know, we're right across the street, so we're going to be looking at these every day. We're not an out-of-town developer that will just put something up and leave town. You know, this is...
Please mute your line.
This is something we really want to take pride in, and, you know, these concepts can show you and give you a better idea of some of the ideas we have and how it'll actually be a pretty attractive development on the site. So Kevin had mentioned traffic earlier. We are anticipating with this development that we would need a stoplight at the intersection of Lakeview and 53rd Street. Again, this is subject to a traffic study to confirm any modifications we would need to do. But in addition to that traffic light, we're also anticipating the need for two right-turn lanes into the property to be added and extended on to 53rd, as it sits now, for easier access into the development. Another topic that was brought up at the neighborhood meeting, January 7th, that, you know, we want to put some thought into as we respect the opinions of everyone that this is going to affect, so light pollution, this is something that, you know, our engineers want to give some thought. And based on the current zoning, a lighting plan would be required for any development that goes on the commercial side of this. So, you know, there would be basically a light study to make sure that there isn't pollution, light pollution that's flowing into the adjacent neighborhood. Also, cutoff lighting is something that would be a requirement. So as you can see in this image, you know, it's really trying to focus the beam of light so it's not, you know, shining everywhere into the neighborhood. It's really only staying on the commercial development. Then let Kevin kind of segue into the residential piece of the development.
Yeah, so as we move south from the commercial along 53rd, I would direct your attention to the top half of this slide. This shows a multifamily rental community with approximately 125 units. These will be high-end rental townhomes, rents between $1,600 and $1,800 a month. The community will include a dog park, walking path, some type of amenity building, and all access will be to the north. So this, to be very clear, this multifamily development will have no connection to the existing streets in the residential communities around them. This will be our fourth townhome community in the Quad Cities, and we found there's a strong demand for this type of product, particularly from major employers such as John Deere, Genesis, and the Rock Island Arsenal. These are high-income folks who would generally typically probably be home buyers, but the nature of their job, they're coming to the market for only two to three years, and they, in many cases, are electing to rent a townhome. Gives them the convenience of apartment living in a space that feels very much like a single-family Our goal is to use, oh, sorry, back to that one?
Sorry, you went. That's back?
Yep, right here. So our goal is to use the dog park, another park in the southeast, and then detention to have building setbacks well in excess of the required building setback. So we have committed at this time to be at least 100% further than the required setback of 25 feet. So we've committed to 50-foot setbacks where we meet the existing housing at this time, and our goal is to go beyond that as well. But we'll commit to at least 100% greater setbacks than are required. As you continue south, you'll see the numbered lots. These are for owner-occupied, single-family attached homes. You'll see we have, well, this is showing 56, there's a, in our most recent iteration, it's continuing to develop, we're down to about 51 lots. So one of the things we took away from the neighborhood meeting was density being a concern in the single-family subdivision. So we've reduced the density by about 10% from 56 down to right around 51 lots. But these will be built for sale by owner occupants. They'll connect to the east towards Hawk and the south on Eastbury with no connection to the west. As you can see, we use the wet detention on the west side of the site, both practically for stormwater detention, but we intend for this to be an attractive pond. We anticipate that the most expensive lots will be lots with view of the wet detention. And the last thing I'd like to mention on this, and some of the people in the audience have seen it a few weeks ago, we've continued to revise the concept, and based on the feedback from the community, we've made a number of changes. The first is to increase the setbacks, like I previously mentioned, from 25 feet, which is what the code requires, to a minimum of 50. The second is we have committed to build to only half of the height that's allowed. So this zoning would allow for 70 feet of height, and we're committing to build no taller than 35 feet. And then lastly, once again, we've reduced the density by about 10% from the community, from the neighborhood meeting, all of these based on feedback that we received. This right here is an initial concept of what the multifamily buildings would likely And, you know, once again, it's always important to address the benefits to the community. The first one, certainly increased tax revenue. You know, we anticipate between the commercial and residential, conservative figure of $1 million of tax revenue that this development would create annually to the city. We see that as a public good. Certainly new commercial amenities that Russell could speak to. And lastly, increased property values, being adjacent to community amenities and new housing. There's an abundance of research that shows that that is a benefit to neighboring property This time, we'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioners, at this time, do you have any questions? Commissioner Schneider?
Maybe I missed it, but what is the sales value or sales price of the single families?
We anticipate they will be somewhere around $300,000.
Any additional questions from commissioners, either in place or virtually? Commissioner Schneider, you still have your cue on. Thank you. Virtual commissioners, any comments, questions? Hearing none? I appreciate your presentation. We'll move on to the neighbors. Would anybody like to step forward and speak in favor of this petition? If so, please step to the podium and identify yourself. Try to limit your comments to three to five minutes. Seeing none? Are there any virtual participants that'd like to make a statement in favor of this Seeing none? Would anybody present like to speak forward and speak in opposition? If so, please step forward, one at a time, identify yourself, limit your comments to three to five minutes, and hopefully we won't have a lot of repetition.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Clifford. I live at 4530 East 49th Court in Davenport. And I, as you mentioned, I'm in opposition for it. This parcel is boarded by three sides, by single-family residential neighborhoods. These 78 homes include many longtime owners, as well as families with children. When homes become available for sale, they are quickly purchased by families with younger children. Owners have invested in maintaining and upgrading their properties with roofs, sightings, windows, decks, fences, landscaping, as well as interior improvements. It's not a degraded neighborhood. This zoning proposal will not have a positive effect on our property values, but does increase a negative risk, which I differ with the developers. Rezoning to multifamily housing will significantly alter the family atmosphere of these neighborhoods. The current R4 zoning allows development that is consistent with the existing adjacent residential properties. The developer's proposal more than doubles the density of the existing adjacent neighborhoods, even with their 10% reduction. These buildings will be visible and reduce the open appearance as essential elements of an R3 and R4 neighborhoods. Changes to the C2 area removes buffer requirements to protect those adjoining homes. Our neighbors will experience an increase in noise, traffic, and stormwater runoff significantly above what would be expected with the development under the existing zoning. Paul Norton Elementary School is already at capacity, resulting in a waiting list for children within walking distance who must attend other facilities. Doubling the density of the new development will make this a bigger issue for the new residents. I have a personal concern with the management of the stormwater runoff. Even with retention systems that meet city code, we will see increased peak flow rates in Stafford Creek during storms. This creek exits the subject property into my backyard. The storm drain from one block of East 49th Court joins the creek on my property, so I have observed the flow, so I've observed the flow that can be expected during heavier rain just off that little area. The increased ground coverage allowed by R4MF would inevitably lead to more flash flooding and erosions. Will the market support the proposed high-end apartments and townhomes? These, there are extensive new developments nearby in Bettendorf, which are not built adjacent to existing family homes. If rezoning is approved and developers engage in detailed designs and plans, which they've already started making the change, we must expect their original proposals require adjustments to meet code and economic restrictions. I'm very much convinced the retention ponds they're showing in their developments are not large enough for this capacity. It's going to have to change, that'll have a negative impact on them. As neighbors, we will be at risk for an even less desirable plan with increased risk to the value of our existing homes without recourse. I've personally contacted 60% of the residential neighbors of the property within the 200-foot boundary requirement of the rezoning code. Only three were undecided regarding opposing the rezoning proposal. All others are opposed to changing the zoning. Question I have for you, if this was your neighborhood, would you support the change? Please consider the needs of our longtime tax-paying residents as you evaluate this request. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to caution future speakers that comments like what was just made, that his personal survey, that's not, you know, unless we've got petitions, and even petitions are questionable as to whether that's something we take into account, the protest rate of the 200-foot boundary will be taken into account by the council, but at this point in time, that's kind of like hearsay evidence, and I don't know that we need to hear that going forward. I appreciate your other comments, so, yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Patrick, and my husband...
My name is Kathy Patrick and my husband and I live at 5166 Dove Court in Bettendorf. And I want to really encourage you to vote against this. The property abuts my home and with the proposed changes, we will have commercial businesses directly in our backyard. This isn't acceptable at all. I propose that rather than having two rolls of land zoned, that it cut, that that be cut in half. In the front have commercial, but the rest of it, let it be what it should be. The proposed landscaping is not acceptable. It's not going to buffer anything. We're still going to get the noise, we're still going to get the light. They can try to keep it, you know, focused, but I don't believe that that's going to work. And the wet detention that they have, that's going to attract, it's still being an attractive nuisance. It's going to attract disease curing insects like mosquitoes. I'm concerned about children living in that neighborhood. I know they have open areas across 53rd, but little children don't live right there. Having so many multifamily homes will also adversely affect the neighborhood. It's going to cause a great deal of noise and congestion and it's already so difficult to get out on 53rd during rush hour traffic. This is going to make it impossible and that also is just not acceptable. And rather than having all these multi-family homes, I know we have to have this developed, but it would be nice if it could be single family detached homes. There aren't enough. I would move in a heartbeat to get away from this, but there's no place to move. If the house goes on the market, it is sold immediately because there are not enough. And it could be that some people want the the attached homes, but they're out there. We need the detached homes. Have it be the neighborhood that we've already come to love that has thrived. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Uh, my name is Michael Ryan. I'm at 4646 East 49th Court and on the uh very southern border of uh the subject property. Um, I'm not going to repeat uh what the others have talked about, but one thing I do want to do is uh provide a little bit of context in regards to the ordinances that the petitioner is recommending that we just, just get rid of. Back in 2011, we have this weird shape because the initial proposal effectively locked us out from uh protesting the commercial development. It basically was a 200-foot wide U shape around the perimeter of uh the development. And so we could only protest the residential that they were proposing to put into that. We couldn't protest, because we were too far away, the commercial that they were going to put in in the middle and they were going to put in-
I'd like to ask, I want clarification from that. Is that true? I I thought when we rezoned this in 11 that it was 200-foot all the way around the entire property. We didn't do that as two separate parcels, did we?
I would have to check. I don't know at this time.
To the best of my recollection, we were rezoning the entire piece and it was my understanding that those two ears were trying to, to try to provide additional buffer to the neighborhood sections from the commercial part that extended to the south. Uh, if you could get clarification on that, Laura, I'd sure appreciate it.
Yeah, I will.
Continue.
I I did pause my time because I don't think that-
I'm not watching your time too bad, so you're good.
Last time I came up, you told me I spoke for 15 minutes when I only spoke for seven, so I just want to be clear.
Please continue.
Thank you. So regardless of how it necessarily came about, the neighbors and the property owner fought in order to to come to a resolution and the current boundaries and the ordinances were part of the resolution that we came to. This was a meeting of the minds, kind of the, the, you know, you know you've got a good deal when both sides are not entirely happy. That's where we were. We didn't want R4, we wanted R3. And so just getting rid of the ordinances is a little bit of a slap in the face to all the work that we did in 2011. So I really want us to consider what we're doing when we get rid of those ordinances. The other thing, I I do want to thank the Dolan Company for agreeing to to the height restriction. Uh, I really do think that Russell should do the same, uh, because in the entire area, everything is two stories. There is, there was a uh reference that the ORA building was three stories, but from 53rd, it only rises up two stories. You only really count it as three stories if you're looking from the other side and it's really just a walkout basement. So I would really encourage us to keep the ordinances or at least have a deep discussion as to what we're going to do in order to get rid of the uh ordinances and also uh I'd like to see us keep that, the height restriction. Again, thank you for the Dolan Corporation to to keep it, but I'd like to see the same commitment from Russell. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Any additional concerns? Please step forward.
Yes, please. My name is Rosie Carcinter.
Hold on just a second, we're doing in-person uh objections first, okay? Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Anthony Ziskowski and my wife, Kristy and I, we own a single family home on 5200 Dove Court. I object to rezoning request, uh, primarily for the reasons that have been stated. The biggest reason is because everything around it is that R3 single family housing. The institution of the rental property, the multifamily housing, does not meet with the intended usage and all of the surrounding usage of the properties. You know, Dolan talked about the ability that they have these very nice homes that they create in the Quad Cities that are averaging sale price of $400,000. That would fit within the current R4 zoning restriction if they want to do that. That would be a great, that'd be an amazing enhancement for for the area. My concern, and I think the concern is, this is conditional to sale of the rezoning. If the rezoning does not happen, there will be no development in there, so there won't be these nice houses built. They're not purchasing this so they could put in R4, you know, these nice $400,000 houses. They're putting it so they can put in townhouses and double the density of the property as as was stated before. Uh, the other thing I'd want to, you know, discuss is the idea of the current housing density and the traffic, um, with the rental property that is being identified there. Last time when this was going through, it was identified that they were not able to put all of that through 53rd. They had to go down onto the East Berry and onto the other areas from a traffic perspective for emergency access. So just saying that that area is only accessible through 53rd will probably not be correct once we actually get into the zoning. And a lot of this is conceptual, you know, there's not plans in place. You know, the previous time when we had this discussion, there was a lot more thought into what it actually was and they were discussing it. This is very much at a conceptual stage, so once the zoning goes through, we don't know what we're going to get. We know this is their idea, but there's a big concern of moving from that R R4 into RMF that it significantly increases that. Um, just with regard, with regard to the C2, I personally live, you know, on the top of the cul-de-sac, so I have, you know, C2 all around me. I fully intend that, you know, the city and everyone will work to make sure that that C2 property is developed well. Um, I felt felt like what was done with the Green State Credit Union was done very well with the buffers, with all the lighting, with everything like that around it. So I don't think that's the concern. The main concern for most residents is the R4 and converting that to RMF. And if they want to, if they want to commit to putting in $400,000 homes, you know, I think that would be a great enhancement to that area. But if they can't do it for financial reasons, then that says something about the property in in general. But, you know, from that side, if they don't want to develop it as zoned today, I think it's kind of a waste of everyone's time to rezone it so that we can develop something that wasn't the intended use of it. Otherwise, why did that zoning happen in 2011 and what and what was the intention for the zoning? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else present like to step forward? Final call? Would anybody like to participate in opposition virtually? Please state your name.
My name is Rosie Carcinter. We live at 4420 East 51st. Uh, we just moved here in October. We love the neighborhood. We are objecting to this development for many of the reasons that have already been stated. In addition, we have discovered, having moved here after the school year has started, that Polnorton cannot physically fit any more children. Our neighborhood is zoned to fit Polnorton School and or zoned for Polnorton Elementary. It's already at capacity. If you throw in all these extra houses, where are those kids going to go to school? We're a military family. We don't get to pick what time of year we move, so you're actually going to negatively impact any military families that choose to rent those crammed in squished up townhomes and multifamily building things, because they won't be able to get into the neighborhood school. My older girls ended up having to be bussed to Grantwood in order to get an education at fifth grade level. It's ridiculous. They're, if they're not going to expand, either expand a school or expand capacities or add a school, how are you going to get these children an education? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else virtually?
Uh, yes, my name is Liang Zhao. I live at uh 4634 East 49th Court. I'm a professor at St. Ambrose University. I moved to this um address about three years ago. And during those years, I have noticed a handful of homes have been sold and people moved in. But when we were moving, we were all wondering what would happen to this land. And the realtors told us this would be single residential houses. That assumption we have when moving. And it would be a very big surprise that this would not be the case. And it would affect a lot of people purchasing decisions they know is ahead of time. And I think this decision will also impact everyone, including the people who are lived here for a long time. It's a work, so I'll chat to the resident for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Hi, yeah, this is Andrew Galvin. Uh, I live at 4649 East 49th Court. I just want to echo what we've heard about density, volume, traffic, uh, all that. But I also do want to echo the comment about the zoning in 2011. It was two separate parcels. Please verify that. Specifically so that people could not comment. And again, the density, the volume here, uh, not only the car traffic, but also foot traffic, especially to the school, as has been noted. This is just too many people for this area. It's, it, it is going to significantly change the character of this neighborhood and not for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Final call? Commissioners, any questions? Final call for questions. That being said, we will close REZ 20-09. It will return to us on February 2nd in the same room, the same time, 5 o'clock, with staff's recommendation. That concludes the public hearing for tonight. We will move on to our regular meeting agenda. We will start with roll call. Uh, I'll give those of you that plan to leave a few seconds here to exit so we can continue on with our regular meeting. Commissioner Tomlin, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Yeah.
Lammers?
President.
Matt? Johnson?
President.
Tomlin here. Ingram? Hettner?
Here.
Brandsguard? Brandsguard?
Here.
Reinarts?
Here.
Manus?
Here.
Garrington?
I'm here.
Go to court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report of city council activity.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, sorry. The moratorium that we spoke about on January 5th-
Yes.
-has been approved by city council and it's in effect.
Thank you. Appreciate that update. Secretaries, report.
Move, report, second.
The reports been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? It will stay as written. Report of comp plan, anything new, Laura?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Matt. Zoning activity, Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one case this evening under new business, and that's case REZ 20-08. Request of MCC Iowa LLC on behalf of MM Development LLC to rezone 5,000 Grand Avenue from RMF Multifamily Residential District to I1 Light Industrial District to allow for construction of a communications building to house and operate electronics and fiber optic cables. Staff recommends case REZ 20-08 be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation of approval, subject to the one condition listed and ISO move. Second.
Case number REZ 20-08's been moved and seconded for discussion. Staff?
Sure, so the applicant is proposing to rezone this parcel from multifamily to light industrial district. You may remember this parcel from 2019. So this is basically a flip of that 2019 decision. You can see the subject parcel in the middle of the map with the hash marks. Um, it's right on the boundary of multifamily residential to the south, but it is surrounded by light industrial to the north, west and east. And as you move east, uh, from Grand Avenue, you get into more of the industrial park of the city. Uh, land use map, you have more of commercial along Brady Street and Welcome Way with indu- uh, industrial to the east and some residential general directly south. Uh, rezoning this property does require an amendment to the land use map to amend this property from residential general to industry. Uh, this is just the vicinity of the surrounding area. The property is highlighted in yellow. Uh, you have apartments directly south, uh, retail along Brady Street to the southwest. And then you can see the St. Ambrose Dome, uh, on Brady Street just to the north with uh some light industrial along Grand Avenue. Uh, so its current zoning is for multifamily residential, so this is uh really intended for a high-density neighborhood type of development to allow for um a variety of different housing types. The proposed I1 light industrial district is uh intended for a variety of light manufacturing and processing. Uh, light industrial uses are usually enclosed and low-intensity uses with minimum if any outside impacts. So the purpose, uh, as stated, is to allow for construction of a communication building to house and operate electronics and fiber optic cables. The site's currently vacant, it's just over one acre. And as I mentioned before, this property was I1 and then rezoned to multifamily in 2019. However, that development never occurred, so this would be to revert it back to an industrial district. Uh, these are just a example floor plan and building elevation uh provided by the applicant on how the site uh could potentially look. Uh, in terms of public input, city staff placed a sign at the property. Uh, we also sent notices to all abutting property owners within 200 feet. No one spoke at that public hearing last time. So the ordinance outlines a set of approval standards for rezoning map amendments. One is the consistency of the proposed amendment with the comprehensive plan. Another is the compatibility of the zoning with adjacent and nearby property, the compatibility with the established neighborhood character, the extent to which proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, suitability of the property for the purpose for which it is presently zoned, and then finally, the extent to which the proposed amendment creates any nonconformities. So staff is recommending that this rezoning petition be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval, with the condition that the city council pass a resolution to amend the future land use designation from residential general to industry. So staff found that this I-1 light industrial district is compatible with the zoning of the adjacent area along Grand Avenue and then further east. The established neighborhood character is primarily industrial, with some residential to the south. However, this is a low-intensity industrial development, which will serve as a buffer and a transition zone between those two uses. And then finally, this rezoning to I-1 does not create any nonconformities per the zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, have any questions? All right, second. Would the petitioner like to step forward? Sorry, Mr. Percher.
Hello, I'm Dan Percher. I'm with MCC. Any, we were planning on building the, I know the one picture showed the building being very tall. It would just be more of a regular, you know, size like a garage-size roofing on it, not that size, you know, that big of a building. But we were looking at putting that building more to the north of the property with parking on the, you know, out front on the side, more of a buffer between the residents and our building. So we just want to be a nice, quiet neighbor, basically. There wouldn't be any major noise or anything coming from that building, so.
Do you have any guess, Matt, as to how tall the building will be?
No, I do not. It would not, it'd just be a single-story building. It would not be the, the, the one picture is just showing basically the outer shell of what the building would, the texture would be. And that would, that's what that picture was referring to more so than the height of it, so.
Okay. Appreciate that clarification. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mine's not really directed at the petitioner at this time. It's more of a explanation for the condition to the rest of the commissioners, so I can either tackle it now or wait.
Let's go ahead and do it now.
Okay, just for the rest of the commission, for their benefit, on the condition that we just saw, I talked to Laura a little bit about it before, and Laura, you can feel free to shut me up and explain it threadway, but since we haven't really had a case in the past that required us to look at the land use plan or go through the comp plan, our comp plan, for the folks that have been on the commission for a little bit, if you remember, we really disbanded it, and I think the last time we ever had a case come in front of us that impacted the land use plan where we needed the comp plan, we just did it as a commission as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
So with this case, the council is going to take that role for this case. That's why that condition is there, and it is reading the way it is. So I'm sure we will have a discussion soon on how we want to handle future land use amendments and how we would handle that, whether we do it again as a whole commission or we bring back the comprehensive plan committee, and I'm guessing we probably will with the recent rewrite, and we will have cases come up that, you know, may not fit. So I just, again, just for the benefit of the commissioners, I just wanted to explain what that is, and Laura, you can feel free to add subtract or-
Yep, I think you captured it well. I was going to bring this up a little bit later, but my plan as the development and planning administrator is to enact at least an annual workshop, and we can find, hopefully, a time with a little bit lower volume of business before the Plan and Zone Commission to talk through this in a little bit more detail in a work session and see how the commission would like to proceed with that committee and how you want to see amendments to the comp plan in the future.
Thank you, Laura. And I echo Commissioner Tomlin's comments. I appreciate his insight and to ask that question and get it clarified. Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Any additional questions from the commission, virtually or in person? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Percher. Roll call, please.
Schneider?
Yes.
Lammers?
Yes.
Med?
Right.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes? Heppner?
Yes.
Bransgard?
Yes.
Reinartz?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
And Garrington?
Yes.
Motion carries, and that concludes the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. We have nothing in subdivision tonight. Future business. Anything?
We do have another rezoning that will be coming for the public hearing on February 2nd, rezoned from open space to R1 to accommodate a church in the vicinity of the Public Works Building, and that is it currently.
Thank you, Laura. Matt, any additional communication?
None at this time.
Any other business?
None at this time.
Seeing none in the audience other than Mr. Percher.
We will eventually be coming to you with possible revisions related to those moratorium actions that we just, that I mentioned at the last meeting, related to bars and vehicle repair, as well as two-family conversion. So we are still working on what those would look like, or if they're needed as staff, and with the discussion of those that initiated that discussion at the city council level, and then we'll bring them to you.
Thank you, Laura. Look forward to that. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned, and again, I appreciate everybody's participation. Please try to stay safe. It was important for all of you to be involved tonight. Look forward to you in two weeks. Thanks again. Stay healthy. We are adjourned.
Thank you.